Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. It is 3:00 PM on the dot. So again, Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Finance and Performance Committee. Appreciate you being with us today. Also want to note that we are being joined online by member of the committee, Councilmember Felicia Porter of the 10th District. Also staff to the committee, Marguerite Curran is here as well. Again, we have representatives from our school system, from ARPA, from the mayor's office, from the council president's office, and we are pleased to have you all here today. As you know, we are looking at two pieces today, two hearings. The first we're going to start with is going to be legislative oversight, the quarterly budget briefings representative from the Baltimore City Public School System. And so we are pleased to be joined by Mary Ann Cox as well, and I also see Melissa Broome, but feel free to go ahead and get started.
Okay, good morning. Actually, it's afternoon now, isn't it? I'd like to extend greetings to city council members, city council committee members, online or otherwise, any city schools, board members, cabinet members, staff members that who might be attending, and of course, our community partners. City Schools appreciates the opportunity to provide financial status as of year-to-date through the second quarter, so that's the first six months of this fiscal year. So, you know, the purpose of this presentation is to be compliant with the City of Baltimore legislation, LO 21-003, which calls for quarterly budget briefings. So that's what I'm here to report on, our actual status year-to-date December. So that's FY '24, quarter two. So the first slide that has data in it would be the revenue. So it's revenue by sources as of December 31st, 2023. I wanted to talk a little bit about the types of revenue that we have. We at City Schools, a lot of our revenue, an extremely significant part were guaranteed. It's whether it's the state aid calculations, which is funded based on enrollment and poverty, and of course, the City of Baltimore's required local contribution. So we are guaranteed the final number as is determined by MSD-E. I will note that there can be some variance with the State of Maryland revenue because our budget process starts much earlier than we have the final numbers. So we typically include our budgeted numbers for the State of Maryland to be those budget numbers that are provided by the state aid calculation numbers that are released in January each fiscal year. So there can be a timing variance with that. You can see there that we have received, I mean, we have yet to receive 51.5% of the state revenue, and some of it is we City Schools, for those revenue types that we are guaranteed funding based on enrollment and wealth, we receive that money six times a year. There are other types of revenue that do not come in with that frequency. So typically, the bonuses that we get for various certifications just come in one lump, you know, anytime during the year. We also have our non-public revenue, which does not come in, the non-public tuition reimbursement that just does not come in at the six times a year frequency. So the next type of revenue that we record, of course, is the City of Baltimore revenue. And as I noted, they typically are funded at the local required contribution. And the State of Maryland compares the local required contribution to the maintenance of every calculation, and whichever the higher number is, that's what the City would fund us at. So we get our money from the City of Baltimore far more regularly. We get it twice a month, every month of the year. And as we have expenditures every month of the year, that's appreciated. So also, the retiree health pass through, or you know, where we pass the money back and forth to have an impact on the guarantee tax, that also is in excess of the required local contribution. So the next largest component, certainly last year, is investment earnings. I wanted to point out how much investment earnings can fluctuate. In FY 2023, our final investment earnings were 19.4 million, a high. I don't recall having a number that high in my close to 20 years of dealing with City Schools. The '22 number was 1.1 million, and the FY '21 number was 24,000. So you can see how it moves about. You know, of course, '21 was the timing when the Fed's rate was close to 0%. In fact, it went farther negative for a while. So we can see why City Schools does not budget at the higher level because we never know, we're depending on the vagaries of the market. So we have had some conversations with our counselor, our financial counselor, where we hold our ready cash, and they told us that they expect the Fed rate to be cut. They believe that that's already been factored into certain things that would happen between now and the end of the fiscal year. So we are not expecting anything like the 19.4 million we had last year. It'll be less than that. Other revenue, I just wanted to remind everyone what is included in other revenue. And it can be a lot of things. It's basically everything that doesn't fit anywhere else. It's our MSA revenue that we are reimbursed by MSA for the 21st Century Program, the administrat-- okay, administrative, I'm sorry, expenditure. So we get reimbursed for them. Typically, is about 4 million a year. So that would be of that 6 million budget. We also get our OKLA, where we bill other LEAs if we have children who are being educated in their school. I mean, we, you know, we bill back and forth. Like if we have residents, if we have students in their places, we owe them money. If they have students who are in our residences, I mean, you know, like group homes, whatever. So there's some of that money back and forth. We also have rent, overtime use of the school, school police overtime, home and hospital, you know, donations. But probably the other largest segment of our other revenue are the various rent from permits and fees of our facilities, typically schools. Okay. You can see there that we have had some revenue for the proceeds from leases, which GASB statement number 87 means we have to break out separately. So we certainly do that. Just as a note, our federal revenue this year is going to be considerably less than it was last year. Our federal revenue includes Impact Aid, the ROTC reimbursements, E-rate, FEMA, and our IRS subsidy on our Q-SIM bonds. Impact Aid is generally just a couple hundred thousand for the whole year. The ROTC probably is about a million for the full year. E-rate fluctuate a lot. We budgeted it 2.2 million, but it's, it comes in lumps. It's not like we get it equally distributed. FEMA, that's got to be a big change from last year. Last year, we had somewhere around $33 million in revenue for FEMA revenue, for FEMA 1, 2, and 3. So we accrued through 3, we'd received the money for 1 and 2. We will have some portion of FEMA revenue for FEMA 4, which will be our closeout of our reimbursable costs for FEMA. And they're only reimbursable, I think, at 85% of the cost. So it's, it's not as flexible as it had been, but we certainly appreciate reimbursement of any kind. We also have other financing sources revenue. And please note that this 5.7 million reflects the amount that the board approved as a line item in our FY 2024 budget as other financing sources. So it's used to fill a gap in the budget to allow us to have a balanced budget. So those are revenue, and you can see cumulatively, we have 52.3% that we have yet outstanding, which means we've received 47.7. And that's pretty close to what you would expect for a year-to-date through six months. One thing to remember with City Schools is, of course, many of our expenditures are dependent on the school year. So when we have financial statements as of December, it only has four months of school operations. We do have some summer school programs, certainly, but you know, that's much smaller than the expenditures that we have when we're operating full-time schools. So you'll see that through the expenditures, not so much for the revenue because that's not how we receive our revenue. They're pretty much, you know, preset frequencies. The next one is our general fund expenditures. And you can see that our general fund expenditures, including encumbrances, is about 703 million as of December 31st. That includes encumbrances. I'll comment on that in a minute. These costs are called out by MSD-E category, which is what we are required to report. If you look at our financial statements, you won't see anything with object information. Everything is by MSD-E category because that's what we're required to do. COMAR requires that. And also, the little TO book of MSD-E financial instructions also requires it. So I don't know that these costs mean a lot to people who are not familiar with it. You know, it's things like IT expenses are required to be reported in administration. So they just tell us exactly where to report. The more meaningful number, of course, is the next page, which would be expenditures by object. That's the one that most people are familiar with. And again, please remember that these expenditures have only four months of full schools being open and the summer programs. So you can see that what we end up with at total expenditures is 46.7% outstanding or to be encumbered, which means we've spent 53.3%. And I would suggest that the number, why that's a little bit over 50% is because of our encumbrances. So you can see that encumbrance is a sizable number, 121 million. A lot of our budget funding is available to the schools. And so we encourage our school leaders to submit and request approval for encumbrances for the rest of the fiscal year as soon as they know about it so that we, of course, at Central Office would be prepared for it. And that way, they'll use the funding that they're given on a school basis because we have fair student funding. So the funding follows the student. So we encourage our school leaders to use that money for the, they're the closest to the students, so they would have a better appreciation of what meets the needs of the students. So I did want to point out that salary and benefits are almost three-quarters of our expenses. You know, we budgeted it at 72.7%. And actually, our year-to-date actual is 73.8%, so it's only slightly higher. But it is notable that, you know, as go our positions, so goes our actual expenditures and our budget, our funding budget. So we're very mindful of that. The fringe benefits, I think, will be a little higher this year because of some adjustments we, actually, some payments we had to make for a prior year. So that's all taken care of. And you know, you can see what we have left there. I did want to talk about the other things. Certainly, our materials and supplies are things, are items that have a useful life less than one year, considered expendables, instructional supplies mostly. Utilities and other charges, you can see that where a lot of them were in the 40s here. That would be utilities, any travel, whether it's local or out of town, and our conferences. So, but the utilities, of course, make up the largest part of that. Property and equipment is the flip side of the materials and supplies. Those would be items whose useful life exceeds a year and whose per-unit cost exceeds $5,000 per unit. So principal and interest, of course, City Schools is the only LEA in the State of Maryland who has the authority to issue our own debt. So this would be our principal and interest, I believe, on our qualified school construction bonds. There's two issuances that remain outstanding at this point in time. Our indirect cost recovery, that's where we are entitled to recover a certain amount, pre-calculated amount agreed upon with the calculation methodologies agreed upon by MSD-E and USDE. And then they apply to the various LEAs. They do that every five years. So the indirect cost recovery last year was about 6 million. It will not be that high this year because those are assessed on our grants, and the COVID grants are coming to an end. So as they phase out, this type of recovery would not be possible. So we'll go back to our normal amount where we were, you know, maybe 3.5 million per year. So that's where we'll get to when the COVID grants are gone. Transfers. This is a good-sized number for us, $24 million. The kind of costs that go in transfers would be things that we pay other educational entities across the state, and or we pay people who provide educational services to some of our students. For example, DJS and DHS, so they provide educational services to children in state-supervised care. We pay money for our students to attend the seed school, and that is now middle school and high school now. We pay for the OKLA ITC, like we talked about the revenue earlier, and our non-public tuition reimbursement. So those non-public tuition reimbursement costs relate to children who, by the terms of their IEP, are required to be placed in other non-public institutions to receive their, their free and appropriate public education. So the rates are negotiated by MSD-E, and they have the listing of the acceptable other schools that we may, or educational facilities where we may put our students. And MSD-E reimburses a certain portion of those expenditures. So the last slide is just our summary. You know, as kind of a rule of thumb, we would say, gee, we should be close, somewhere close to 50% expended, 50% to be expended if we didn't have that little bump for four months of schools open in the first six months. You know, for September through December, it's open, and the summer expenditures are less. So that skews the percentage a little bit. But you can see that our revenue, we have 52.3% to be received yet. We have 46.7% to be available for the remaining expenditures and encumbrances. So I'm happy to present these numbers on behalf of City School CFO, Chris Doherty. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, first, thank you for the report. Also want to acknowledge Councilman Costello of the 11th District, member of the committee who has joined us as well. I'm also glad that you did give mention to the seed school, which is in our 9th District in terms of an example of one of the educational facilities. So again, that's helpful. I know, I have one question, but I do want to also make sure we get Councilmember Porter in, if she has any questions. And then in the meantime, as we're doing that, I did have one question. You'd mentioned the FEMA funds. Can you talk about that, what that's, what's it being used for, and how that comes to the City, or City Schools?
Yeah, you know, FEMA funds. Typically, City Schools does not apply for FEMA funds directly. In some cases, we have applied as part of the Cities, the City of Baltimore's. But there are a few times when it is appropriate for us, few natural disasters, something similar to that. I recall that maybe about five or six years ago, with that very high snowfall, we had additional expenditures that were incurred to take care of the snow. We couldn't keep up with it, and FEMA gave us some money, some reimbursement percentage for that. The FEMA that I was referring to that has affected our financial results for the last few years has been FEMA reimbursement relating to certain types of COVID expenditures.
Got it, that's helpful. Because I was thinking, you know, mostly about COVID, but then you mentioned the snow, and I'm glad you kind of gave--
Yes, there are other kinds that we might get from time to time, but it's not usual. COVID testing was there too? And PP&amp;E, I mean, all kinds of COVID. But they were very specific about what they would reimburse us.
There's a bit of a flashback, as I have my third grader who's back there, and I'm thinking about all the COVID testing was happening in the City Schools. So definitely remember. Councilmember Costello, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
All right. I do have just a couple more clarifying. Oh, I will say, just as a point, I'm glad that you also managed folks' understanding as you talk about how many months of school we're in, based upon the percentages of expenditures and all that. So that makes a lot of sense. That's good to hear. Oh, and then the MSD-E categories. As you were going through this, I was also thinking about where things are parked and as you were going through it. So that's helpful to know what's going on there. Are there any, let me say this. You'd mentioned the salaries and wages are three quarters, but the fringe benefits were going to be up this year. Is that, that was correct?
I'm sorry.
Did you know the fringe benefits would be higher this year?
There, yeah, there was a pension payment that we had to make that was larger than normal. So that is reported in the benefits, that's all. So it's already been paid, already been recorded.
Got it, okay. That was, that was my question, okay. And I know we're not, we don't have any public commentary or questioning at this point. Oh, this was also, the investment earnings, you said 19 million? And I know you mentioned the federal interest rates as well.
It was much higher.
What, okay, can you give me a number? What's more typical that we should expect? Or what do we see in a typical year, if there is such a number?
I don't know, because it fluctuates so much, and it's dependent on the amount of cash that we have. You know, the average cash that we have at a point in time. So, you know, I recall this year that we are allocate, we're transferring a lot of our assigned fund balance. Our cash is going to go down because the funds will be spent by the Capital Projects Fund for the gap funding and the swing space funding for many of our high schools because the Built to Learn funding didn't come in quite where we thought it would. So we believe our cash is going to go down. And the interest rate, what our financial advisor said was that it was around 5% last year, which was really high from a historical perspective. But that they believe with what the Fed will do this year, that it will be something less than that. We would not receive a 5% return on our money across the year. So we would expect the cash balance to go down, and the interest rate will be less than what it was last year. Don't know exactly one because, you know, so much is depending on our cash in and cash out on a, on a almost daily basis. You know, the way we get our funds in from the state and the city versus how we expend our funds, you know, it's dependent on our spending patterns too. But we have historically just budgeted a million, knowing that there's some years, like FY '21, where you budget a million and you get 24,000. And then FY '22, I mean, these numbers are working right into it. We budget a million, we got 1.1 million, okay. But then last year was, you know, the Fed's rate just went, went so high. And who knew, you know, who knew how long it was going to last? You know, you just don't know. But when it's done, certainly, we know that we got a much higher investment earning than we had before. So we expect it to be lower this year. How long, can't quite tell yet. But we know that our cash balance will go down because we've transferred a lot of funds to the Capital Projects Fund so they can work on the schools.
Got it. And obviously, that capital side is going to be very important as well. And then last question I have for you. You'd mentioned the financial advisor. What's the entity that's the financial advisor for the school system?
Oh, no, we have, we put out for bid, you know, an RFP so that banks could bid on our, you know, being our financial advisor for the money that we keep on a, on a, we don't need the money. We have one, and we put out in a separate RFP, we have a bank where we do our day-to-day, the payroll account, the collections account, the disbursement account. You know, we probably have five or six different ones. That's in one bank. But then we did a separate RFP for investments. Now, please remember that our investment opportunities are limited because we must comply with COMAR and the state's requirements. And also, there's not a lot of places we go, but certainly, T-bills are one we can. And with the rate being what it was, you know, that would be why our investment earnings were high last year. But we have invite, they look at it, you know, they invest the money going in and out. You know, they make recommendations on how long we should put the money out for. You know, do we do 60-day, 90-day, whatever? You know, we look at the returns and, you know, we meet quarterly with the advisor to see where we are, where we might go.
No, that's really helpful. And thank you for walking me through that. I think it's a side that, a financial side that a lot of people don't see. So it's much appreciated. One last call for any additional questions. I don't see any. So again, I'll just thank you for the time today. And then we'll recess this hearing, and we'll move on. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to move on to 210062R, American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearing. Again, we think about the importance of ARPA. And so, Shamaya Kearney, thank you for being here and being patient and walking us through this. Just, I'll just say, you know, this disbursement and the management of a significant sum of money, the $641 million in federal funding through the City of Baltimore, through the state and local fiscal recovery fund. And again, we know that transparency is important, and so we appreciate you coming here to answer those questions so that we can all be on the same page coming out of the pandemic and also look toward a brighter future in Baltimore. So I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Shamaya Kearney. I'm the Chief Recovery Officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Chairman Bullock and members of the council are pleased to provide an update on the progress related to programs and initiatives funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Before doing so, I'd like the members of the Recovery Office team, with whom I have the privilege to lead and serve with, to please introduce themselves to the council.
Good afternoon, Elizabeth Tatum, Deputy Director in the Recovery Office.
Good afternoon, Lauren Jackson, Project Manager.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Joseph Anthony Kelly. I'm the Community Engagement Officer.
Good afternoon, Josh Wilson, our Project Manager.
Good afternoon, Patrick Williams, Project Manager.
So I will always begin with a heartfelt thank you to these amazing public servants with who I have the privilege to lead in this mission and collectively serve the residents of Baltimore City. As I always tell you, excuse me, there will be criticisms and critique of the implementation of ARPA funds in the city, but please be reminded that in the end, our work will speak for us. I thank you for your service, for your selflessness, and for your dedication to Baltimore City. As we near the third anniversary of the signing of the American Rescue Plan Act into law, which provided Baltimore City with a historic 641 million in grant funding, we have come far, but we still have far to go. I will remind you of where we came from. Historic levels of unemployment, industries on the brink of collapse, reliance on the internet for health, academics, and employment, daily death counts ever-present on our televisions, fear and anxiety of leaving our homes-- fear and anxiety of leaving our homes for basic necessities and challenges related to housing and food insecurity. Accordingly, we prioritize people. Funding programs and initiatives that span from workforce development, broadband and digital equity, housing, food provision, homeless services, and violence intervention, among many, many others. Accordingly, since July 2021, when Recovery Office first stood up, ARPA funding has been used to make tangible impacts in community, to include funding for 22 organizations for education and outreach, planning grants to develop neighborhood-based digital inclusion plans and for its implementation, free public Wi-Fi at four recreation centers with more to come, the renovation of six athletic courts and three playgrounds with more to come, wages for 218 youth enrolled in the Youth Works Fall Internship with 166 youth continuing in the Spring Internship Program, emergency and winter shelter operations, assistance to 2,036 people through the Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program, produce box distribution to an average of 8,800 households per quarter, distribution of thousands of pounds of fruits and vegetables and meals to vulnerable populations, renovations at Lexington Market to support small minority-owned businesses, financial relief to 92 direct care workers and 200 young families with children, the Economic Recovery Fund, which provided financial relief to 37 accommodations providers, 112 individual artists, 182 childcare providers, 234 nonprofit organizations, and 457 small businesses. There are many successes to tout, too numerous to detail here. However, information on the implementation of ARPA and progress on our initiatives can be found in Treasury and Council reports that are publicly posted on our website and on the ARPA dashboard. These tools were created so that the public with whom we seek to serve and to whom we are accountable can access accurate and factual information. I will now share financial and performance data for city agencies, quasi-government agencies, and nonprofits who were granted ARPA funds. In areas where there is low to no spend, that is not indicative of the incredible amount of work that funded entities are, funded entities are putting forward to make progress on ARPA-funded projects. And I'll provide additional context as we go along in the presentation. Next slide, please. So just wanted to recap for everyone to make sure that we're all on the same page about the financial terminology that we use for commitments that generally refers to all of the funding that we've allocated across fiscal years. It's the amount that's typically included in our fully executed grant agreements with funded entities. And obligation, contracts, purchase orders, and standalone invoices that were approved in Workday, which is our system, our financial system of record. And expenditures, meaning those amounts that are charged to ARPA accounts and have moved to organization or information, or data that we've reported to the United States Treasury. Next slide, please. And so all of the information that we will be providing today is data that is as of December 31, 2023. January books just closed on February the 8th, and so we have not had an opportunity to review all that information and make reconciliations. But obligation data should be considered working estimates due to some data quality challenges that we sometimes have in Workday. Our obligation calculation includes funds that were committed to external parties through supplier contracts, purchase orders, and standalone invoices in Workday. In addition, it's funds spent on salaries and personnel costs. Our committed amounts consist of funds budgeted across multiple fiscal years. And just as a reminder, all ARPA funds must be fully obligated by December 31, 2024 and fully expended by December 31, 2026. Next slide. So as an overview, as of December 31, 2023, we have $324 million that have been obligated and $183.4 million that's been expended. Next slide. This slide provides information on our quarterly obligations and expenditures. This is not quarters for fiscal years, but instead by calendar year. And so you'll see that we've had a considerable amount of increase in expenditure and in obligations. Really moving forward in 2023, we really started to see an uptick in obligations and in expenditures. Next slide. This provides an overview of our city agencies. This is the total commitments, expenditures, and the percent expended by city agency. I will be going through all of these individually. And so we'll talk about some context for each one of those organizations. Next slide. This also includes expenditures indicate funds that were dispersed to organizations. So this is not always necessarily funding that's on the ground. This indicates if data, or dollars rather, that are from the Recovery Office and that have been sent to our quasi-government agencies. Next slide. For our expenditures for nonprofit organizations, this is information on the grants that were provided directly by the Recovery Office. For some of the awards, you'll see that there may not be spend. But in some cases, it's because those grant agreements didn't go to the board until either late last year or early this year. And so that spend will not have hit our books just yet. But we anticipate that spending or expenditure data will be updated over the next coming months as these, as these organizations stand up their programs. Next slide. All right, moving into DGS project updates. So DGS has expended 11.8% of the funding that was allocated to the organization. This includes two capital projects and fleet purchases. Some of the load spending obligation is due to some of our procurement challenges that we had, but we did eventually get to a point where we were able to move those. And we expect for everything to be fully executed by mid-2024. As a reminder, the capital improvement projects include the City Hall roof as well as the Northwest Community Action Center. We expect for the City Hall roof bids to come in on March the 6th as it was started to be advertised in January the 26th. For the Northwest Community Action Center, we also anticipate that this agreement will go before the BOE sometime in February. And so then you will start to see, once we have an approved agreement, you'll start to see spend there. For fleet, DGS has received, for DPW fleet, there's 52, I'm sorry, BPD fleet, there's 52 of the BPD vehicles that have been ordered and have been received. There are another 48 that are estimated to be delivered in mid-2024. And for the 52 that have been received, those vehicles are being outfitted as we speak. For DPW, which is 100% obligated, the spend will start to show up in January when the first vehicles arrive. That was part of the, the deal is that we wouldn't see any expenditures on our records until some of the vehicles arrived. We have nine ARPA-funded load packers that are being outfitted, tagged, and labeled. And then there are another 11 that are remaining to be delivered sometime in May or June. Next slide. So for DACD, for impact investment areas, you'll see that there's little to no spend for project administration and also for vulnerable communities. So we'll talk through that a little bit. Obligations have increased over the last quarter. Again, you won't see obligations, you, we mostly talk about expenditures, but their obligations have increased. There's, for the capital, it consists of acquisitions and stabilizations of vacant properties as well as developer incentives and homeowner incentives. Also, as an update, the Notice of Funding Availability was launched in December of 2023 for developer incentives. There's the opportunity for developers to get grants from $25,000 to $50,000 and up to five awards for one property per grant for a total of $250,000. And that, those developer incentives are open not only within the impact investment areas, but also in middle neighborhoods. For project administration, there were some Workday-related challenges around coding. And so we're working with the, with the agency now to make sure that we make those corrections. And so you'll start to see spends shortly after we're able to reconcile our records. For new affordable housing, this only included, this is for staff only. As well as for vulnerable communities, that includes wraparound support specialists. And DACD continues to work on adding capacity in this position and the position was, and other incentive programs that were launched using this individual. For Park Heights, we had a groundbreaking on December the 13th. We are funding public infrastructure improvements in senior housing, which consists of 100 affordable senior rental units, 53 affordable multifamily rental units, and 17 affordable home ownership units. Construction has begun on infrastructure improvements with a target completion date of August of 2024. For Uplands, the spend consists of public infrastructure improvements, including wet utilities, road construction, and building materials for vertical construction. That was also going to result in 150 units of affordable house, of affordable rental housing. Next slide. For Tavoli, the project has been delayed due to some environmental requirement for new construction as well as the property was recently designated or listed on the National Historical Registry, which requires a mitigation strategy. So the agency is working right now through some of those challenges and then will reassess the ability to be able to continue to fund that particular property. As you know, we have the obligation and expenditure deadline. And sometimes the environmental and historical challenges can sometimes be lengthy. And so we'll continue to monitor that and continue to work with DACD regarding that particular project. For hubs, there's been little spend, but there's, these are for individual grants to older adult homeowners for contractor services up to $25,000. The agency has shared with us that over 2,000 applications from seniors have been received. And they are working through those applications to provide awards to eligible seniors. Project administration consists of contractual staff. That includes building inspectors, real estate agents, energy technicians. And there has been some challenge hiring there, but we understand that DACD will be prioritizing those hires and trying to do so through contractual positions. Workforce supports is just equipment, so not much equipment has been purchased, well, none at all. For wealth building in middle neighborhoods, this features individual grants of up to $30,000 to legacy homeowners and up to $10,000 for any homeowners for exterior improvements. We're still working with DACD to execute a grant agreement and we expect for the agreement to be executed within the next few months. For Baltimore Shines, we're also working with DACD to execute the grant agreement, grant agreement for this program. This provides grants for rooftop solar installations for low-income residents. For healthy homes, project administration, this is for obligated, I'm sorry, for contractual positions. For vulnerable communities, this includes payments to contractors for healthy home interventions, including weatherization and HVAC services and lead hazard reduction. There are about 36 applications in underwriting, 19 that are in scope, and nine that are in the construction phase for that program. For our permitting system upgrades, we're currently in the discovery phase. DACD is working with BICID and also with a software contractor. So they're in the business development or this, the discovery phase right now where they're working with multiple agencies to understand the business processes that would then be integrated into the new permitting system. For Septed, there's about $760,000 that's obligated, although there's no spend on our records just yet. This will be for stabilization and demolition services to take place in the Baybrook community for crime prevention through environmental design. This also includes developer incentives to developers for rehab of vacant properties, both residential and commercial, that are located in the Brooklyn, Brooklyn Park, Curtis Bay neighborhoods. And we expect for those programs to launch in March. There are also granted grants that are available from $25,000 to $50,000 for the commercial properties and $10,000 to $25,000 for residential properties. For right to counsel, we're still working on the, the inter-agency agreement was executed and the entire award will be sub-granted to the Maryland Legal Aid. The sub-grant, we expect to be taken to BOE in March. Next slide. For the Department of Planning and our Clean Core Program, the amount of spend indicates the funding that's been dispersed to BCF, who's the fiscal agent for this project. Funds are for salaries, cleaning supplies, light equipment, et cetera. Proud to share that there's been about 1,500 alleyways cleaned just in the last reporting period alone, as well as 750-plus completed services at vacant lots, 160 tons of trash collected and disposed of. And a component of the program is also a pipeline to city government employment. DOP reports that about nine Clean Core workers were referred to city agencies for employment and there were two that were hired as of November 2023. For our Food and Security Program, the SNAP, there are five components of that program, that SNAP Online, Produce Box Distribution, Produce RX, the Farmers Market Incentives, and funding for BIPOC farmers. For our SNAP Online, we're averaging approximately $10,000 of incentive redemption from our participating retailers, which includes Amazon, Safeway, and Giant. For the Produce Box Distribution, there's an average of 8,800 households that are being served per reporting period, which is quarterly, and an average of 1,000, I'm sorry, 131,000 pounds of produce per reporting period being produced. For the Produce RX program, there's approximately 20,000 pounds of fruits and vegetables distributed during just the last performance period alone, 103 cumulative number of people screened for food insecurity, and also 24,000 meals distributed just in the last reporting period alone. For our Farmer's Market Incentives, approximately $1,600 worth of eat incentives were redeemed in the last reporting period. And for BIPOC farmers, there's 3,200 pounds of produce grown at Farmers Alliance sites, which are the, where the produce gets infused into the supply chain, providing equity in local produce markets. For the Inspired 21 Century Neighborhoods, there's $1.1 billion in funding available for developer incentives for vacant property rehab and renovation in middle neighborhoods and, and neighborhoods that are near, near Century Schools, 21st Century Schools. The grants range from $25,000 to $50,000 per property. No spend in this particular program yet because we haven't executed a grant agreement, but we're working with DOP to do so and expect for an inter-agency agreement to be executed by March of this year. Next slide. For our middle neighborhood support for CDCs, this funding is fully obligated to the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative and there's about 40% of spend to date. The project features sub-grants to Healthy Neighborhoods Initiatives to retain long-term residents by preserving housing affordability, by rehabbing homes of legacy homeowners in middle neighborhoods. Well, this program also features providing resources to current renters and to increase homeownership. Next slide. BCHD, so there's 22.5% spend for BCHD. The overall takeaway here is that if you recall, we took a FEMA-first approach, meaning that any activities related to COVID or that we could get FEMA reimbursement for, we would do so first before tapping into ARPA. As such, there's lower spend in many of the line items for the Health Department. But we are actively working with the Health Department now to identify which line items we might be able to reallocate funding for other purposes throughout the city. We really wanted to make sure that we waited until the winter months were over as we know that sometimes you can have spikes in COVID and other illnesses around that time and didn't want to prematurely make any cuts to that allocation. And so we're actively working with the Health Department at this time to look at where we might be able to make some, some adjustments to the allocation. Let's see, next slide. For BICID, BICID and BDE have been working extremely hard to build a comprehensive project plan, budget, and identify contract vehicles and contractors that can help deliver on the infrastructure work for this particular program. They've launched the Digital Equity Fund, finished standing up an air-gapped network, which started to deploy public Wi-Fi at recreation centers. You heard in my opening remarks that they are already available at four. And they also released the city's digital equity strategy in December of 2023. BICID and BDE are using ARPA grants also for the Digital Equity Fund for recreation centers, senior centers, public housing locations, and a select set of other city, sites in the city. And the air gap network that will separate the city's internal network from the public broadband network, digital inclusion programming as well, and also for staffing. We have an inter-agency amendment that reflects funding for all of BDE's activities, except for the Digital Equity Fund because that's being routed through the board of, as it's being routed through the Board of Estimates for Approval. That $14.6 million in addition to the initial $6 million in the inter-agency agreement will equal a total of $20.6 million for this initiative. For the Digital Equity Fund, this cost center reflects the first round of funding for the Digital Equity Fund and, which is being administered by the Baltimore Civic Fund in partnership with B C I D. In September twenty twenty-three, B C I D awarded one million dollars in funding to twenty-two organizations for education and outreach, and for neighborhood-based digital inclusion plans, and also for implementation. For the Broadband Access Center for Digital Equity Fund, this cost center is an additional, for an additional round of funding for the Digital Equity Fund. That round hasn't occurred just yet. There's a small amount of spend, and we identified that that needs to be reclassified to another, to another cost center. So again, talking through some of the reconciliations that we have to do in Workday. For the hardware refresh, B C I D was awarded five million dollars in July of twenty twenty-three and was granted an additional three million dollars in December. B C, B C I D is working to oblige those funds through December, and then spend will follow in the next report. And we expect that B C, B C I D has already spent funds for City Watch Cameras and for a project manager for the hybrid meeting rooms conversion. So they are continuing to work on deploying hardware, laptops, and desktops, also on the hybrid meeting room conversion, with the goal of having ten rooms upgraded by July of twenty twenty-four. There are also some upgrades to the Arcabas system, the booking system for those hybrid rooms, and then the City Watch Camera and infrastructure. The goal is to replace a hundred and eighty-five cameras by July of twenty-four as well. Fifty-four of those cameras have already been replaced. Next slide. Next slide. Yep, thank you. So for B C R P reports a six point nine percent spend. B C R P is on target to complete all the playgrounds, athletic courts, and trail projects this year. There have been some delays in design and solicitation preparation, but we do expect for recreation centers and pools to be bid fairly soon. B C R P and our office are continuing to monitor bids as they come in, and will continue to work with B C R P to ensure that those projects are completed by the statutory deadline. Can't remember if I mentioned, but there are six courts and three playgrounds that we've already completed. For the pools, there's one bid that's out, and we expect for that bid to come back in, on March. And then for the Greater Model Pool, we expect for the bid, or they're targeting spring, summer of twenty-four for that bid. For Recreation Centers, Gardenville bid was received on January twenty-fourth and is currently with our Office of Small and Minority Business Advocacy and Development for Compliance Review. And for our South Baltimore Recreation Center, we expect one hundred percent design to occur by February, with complete construction documents by May of twenty-four and targeting early June, early June twenty twenty-four for bidding. Next slide. For D P, D P W, those inter-agency agreements were recently signed, so we're working with the agency to oblige capital improvements, funding for, for capital improvements very quickly. Although there's zero percent obligated at this time, again, we just signed the agreement in December, and so giving the agency some time to, to move their projects accordingly. The capital improvements include facility upgrades at various locations, operating improvements that include the purchase of new technologies, such as routing software and tablets, as well as larger equipment, including mini low packers, tractors, and bobcats. We're also funding recycling crews, which will, the funds will be fully expended by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. That's for thirty positions, that's twenty laborers and ten drivers. All of those positions are filled, and all of those individuals have started employment. Those D P W positions will transition to the general fund on July one, so in the next fiscal year. We're also funding the waste removal contract with, with Spindler, and we expect for those funds to be fully, fully expended by the end of calendar year twenty-four. Next slide. For O P I and Digital Services, this is for staffing. For O P I, this funds three staff with the primary, primary responsibility of establishing agency performance plans and to track agency performance. For Digital Services, there are four members of that team. They're all in place and have been since March of twenty twenty-three. They're working on projects such as standing up a G I S Center for the Office of Emergency Management, conducting user research about ways to strengthen communication from cities, from the city during emergencies, supporting work to digitize special events permitting, and completing a high-level evaluation of the three-one-one web app and give user experience recommendations to the three-one-one team. Next slide. For M O E D, there's thirty point nine percent of their grant that's been expended. Youth Works expenditures have been a little bit lower than what was expected, but M O E D is using ARPA funds to offer new youth employment opportunities to complement the Summer Youth Works program. You're also aware that there are other workforce development programs that M O E D is running, which includes higher-up, train-up, and of course, Youth Works. For higher-up, M O E D is organizing cohorts of fifty-five residents for six months of subsidized employment with city and quasi-government agencies. As of December, a hundred and seventy-seven residents have participated, and M O E D is prioritizing spending their state ARPA funds first, and then will tap into the city ARPA grant for that program as well. For train-up, there are about four hundred and forty-three residents that have enrolled, with two hundred and thirty-seven having completed their training, and there are still others that are currently in training. The average wage for those who gain employment after the program is nineteen dollars per hour. In addition to city ARPA, because again, there's state and city ARPA funds for this program, M O E D awarded train-up grants using the state ARPA funds only. With state ARPA grants ending for some contracts, M O E D is now using city ARPA funds to supplement contracts with training providers that have shown good results, and will continue to see obligations and expenditures increase over the coming months. Workforce supports are for behavioral health care, legal services, career navigation, and the popular Litt Ride to Work program, which has received quite a bit of media attention, and also for other services that are beneficial to those that are in the programs. This also includes a small business wage subsidy program as well. Next slide. So for M O H S, top line is that there's about seven point three percent that's been spent. The figure does not include the amount for the hotel purchases that were just announced yesterday, as of course, that hasn't hit our books just yet. But M O H S has launched all five of their ARPA-funded programs, and expenditures have increased over the past couple of months. For our shelter acquisition, the announcement was made yesterday that there was finally a deal for two hotels, and also a management agreement, which will provide continued services at those hotels until the end of this year. There's also shelter operations, where you, M O H S is using a portion of those funds to sustain emergency shelters at the two hotels that have been operating as shelters since the early parts of the pandemic, and also to fund winter shelters for cold, blue days. The Housing Accelerator Fund, while there is no funding that's been spent for that program just yet, applications have been submitted, and the evaluation panels have completed their work. Final awards are being made and are expected to be announced by the end of the first quarter of this calendar year, so next month. And the funds will be used to support the development of permanent supportive housing. For our Housing Navigation and Landlord Engagement, this grant is about fifty-eight percent obligated. The Housing Navigators have been providing services at Pratt Library locations for several months, and the Landlord Incendia Program, which was launched in November of twenty twenty-three. The United Way is serving as our partner and a fiscal agent for that portion of the program. For Shelter Demobilization, this grant is about seventy-six percent obligated. The funds are to, to provide several nonprofit organizations that are providing rapid rehousing services. Expenditures have been a little bit lower than expected, but that's in part because there's a provider that had to terminate, that had to be terminated early in the program, and also M O H S is actively looking at opportunities to repurpose underspend from the grant. For Rapid Resolution and Shelter Diversion Fund, this grant is about forty-one percent obligated. The Homeless Housing Services Cost Center is referred to as the Flex Fund, which launched in November twenty twenty-three, and again, United Way is serving as a partner with us and as our fiscal agent. For the ARPA Renter Homeowner Support Cost Center, this is the two million dollars that was dedicated to eviction prevention, which will be managed by M O C F S. Next slide. So for M I M A, they're reporting seventy-seven point six percent spend. This is for a variety of programs, which includes the Baltimore New Americans Access Coalition. There's a target of a thousand clients served, and the providers, which include I R C, that's an initial provider that needed, one second, take my words back. There were three hundred and eighty-one that have received cash assistance through December twenty twenty-three, and there are four hundred and seventy-three clients that have met with a benefits navigator, and a hundred and ninety that have accessed at least two public benefits excluding cash assistance. For public service delivery, that equates to our Language Access Program. They're currently recruiting for a permanent project manager position. There have been twenty-eight consultations with agencies, a hundred and nine staff have been trained on language access, twenty-five documents have been translated. So there's a lot of good work that's happening with M I M A, and we're proud of the work that they're doing. Next slide. For Monzie, Monzie has seventeen ARPA-funded staff that, and that will be working with the organization or the agency to transition. For the Group Violence Reduction, this includes hospital-based violence intervention programming. For F Y twenty-three and for F Y twenty-four, that includes work with five partners. Again, there have been two thousand and thirty-six people that have been assisted. The spend for F Y twenty-three contracts was fairly high, and most of the contracts have either, either, or I'm sorry, fairly low. Our contracts have either just been approved or are just submitting invoices for payment, so we expect to see spend to increase in that line item. For our G V R S allocation, G V R S is currently operating in the Western District, Southwest District, and Central District, which just started in January of twenty-four. There's a planned expansion to Eastern, to the Eastern District in the coming months. The Emergency Relocation and Housing Assistance, that's at one point three million dollars, and then there's an intensive case management at three point two million, and participant stipends at three million. This also includes a C V I expansion grant to C B Os for survivor wraparound services and mental health supports for C V I workers. Let's go to the next slide. For D O T, we're at zero percent spend as of now. We're still actively working with D O T to execute an inter-agency agreement. We're sharing this slide. Typically, unless there's an inter-agency agreement that's signed, we typically wouldn't report on that, but because we've already shared with the council before some of the plans for D O T, we wanted to make sure that we included that as a part of this presentation. So you might recall that the D O T project will include A D A compliance projects. That includes construction inspection services, and A D A contracts are out for bid with one already in the award process. There's a goal of addressing fourteen hundred A D A ramps and having them reconstructed by June of twenty twenty-six. The locations selected were based on Safe Streets Manual Prioritization Criteria, and we expect for the work to start in July of twenty twenty-four, if not sooner. For our sidewalk reconstruction, the solicitation for sidewalk reconstruction was reviewed by law and is ready for bid. Here, there's a goal to replace sixty-one thousand square feet of sidewalk between April twenty twenty-four and December twenty twenty-five. For street resurfacing, this includes four contracts, one for each sector of the city, and includes construction and inspection services. Sector one, which is the northeast, that contract has been reviewed by our law department and is ready for bid, and we expect that the others should follow behind shortly. The goal is to resurface approximately thirty lane miles, with a total contract is thirty-eight lane miles, and ARPA is funding about eighty percent of that particular project. Next slide. Next slide. For Enoch Pratt Library, they're still working to stand up their digital equity-related programs. To date, they have created about seven digital navigator positions, and hiring will begin soon. They've also started design work for reimagining indoor public computer spaces, and expenditures at the beginning have been a little bit slower than anticipated, but we've been working with Enoch Pratt and expect for expenditures to increase in the coming months. The cost centers that we included in the slide relate to outdoor Wi-Fi expansion and indoor public computer spaces. The workforce supports is for Pratt Anywhere, and then ARPA Digital Literacy is for the Digital Navigators and Community Engagement Programs. Next slide. H A B C is about forty-five point six percent of spend. There's been an increase in obligations over the last reporting period. For P S O Infrastructure, that project is complete, so there's one hundred percent spend there. For P S O Transformation, while one hundred percent obligated, there's fifty percent of spend there. And for the Nathaniel J McFadden Learn and Play Park, there's currently zero spend, but the project agreement has not yet been executed, and we're targeting the spring as the execution date for that agreement. For Perkins Two, the project agreement is not executed, and again, is another one that we expect to execute in the spring. And for O'Donnell Heights, another one that is not yet executed, but we expect to execute in the spring. Next slide. So Live Baltimore is the ARPA Renter Homeowner Support. There's about fifty percent that we've dispersed to Live Baltimore, and there's about three percent, three percent of spend right now. When we talked with Live Baltimore, some of the challenges that are occurring are just the market conditions. The interest rates have doubled since the project launch, which has significantly impacted providing down payment assistance to renters who are interested in purchasing homes. In addition, there have also been some challenges with the affordable housing inventory, as well as the pool of qualified home buyers. For program status, there's about ninety-seven home buyers that have been approved to shop in their process. There's one home buyer that's completed the entire process from application to grant for down payment assistance. The pool for approved to shop is about thirty-six percent of the grants that are available through the program, and there's an additional three hundred and twenty-two home buyers in the process of submitting proof of residency and documents. So we expect for spend to also increase for that particular program. Last slide. Baltimore Hotel Corporation, there's an eight-hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that was provided to Baltimore Hotel Corporation for administrative expenses. We've dispersed about forty percent of that funding to the organization, and just as a reminder, that's for administrative expenses. You'll recall that the Baltimore Hilton was closed for about fifty-one weeks, which challenged their financial status, and so we are assisting with the administrative expenses that they may incur, that they will incur moving forward. The last slide, that is the last slide for agencies. Then there's, I understood that there was a question about ARPA-funded positions, so we are providing a breakdown of the number of positions by agency. There's a total of three hundred and seventy-eight positions that are funded by ARPA. However, there's a large amount that are through M O E D, so that includes their higher-up workforce supports, train-up, Youth Works program, and just a few folks in administration. So outside of M O E D, there's really about a hundred and forty-four or so positions among the other agencies. And so I think that there was a question about what is the, the transition plan for ARPA-funded staff. We are, the expectation has always been that staff understand that they are grant service positions, and so when the grant ends, the positions end. However, we are certainly working with organizations and with our agencies to identify what, if any, positions they think they may need to, to keep in order to progress in some of the programs that they're providing. We're in the midst of that analysis now, so there is no hard number of individuals that might be transitioned from the ARPA-funded position to a general fund position. That will be thought work that we will do with agencies as well as with B B M R. And the last slide, or the next slide is just an appendix slide, which just shows, next slide, which just shows the ARPA funding flow, and that's simply just showing what happens once a city agency requires payment and goes through our process. It's a very simple overview of how money moves within our agency. That completes my presentation. Happy to answer questions at this time.
Well, thank you for a very thorough presentation, as always. Couple of quick questions, and then also turn it over to committee members, see if they have other questions. One was just around the percentage of funds that have been committed. So I know in the past, you'd mentioned that a hundred percent of the ARPA funds have been committed. Just wanted to make sure that's still the case. No changes there?
So, no changes whatsoever happened. We're going with ARPA, we're going?
Sorry. Yes, a hundred percent of funds have been. Yes, 100% of funds have been committed, but with the caveat, we are currently working with agencies now to identify any projects that are at risk of not meeting our obligation and expenditure deadlines. Once we identify and talk with agencies and figure out what the plan of action will be around some of those programs and initiatives, there would be opportunities, or the administration will look to reallocate to programs and initiatives that we know that we can fund and meet the obligation and statutory deadlines for expenditure.
That is helpful, because that also led me into another question I was going to ask in terms of the amount of funds that have actually been obligated and then spent. I know we're right around half of that, so again, when you're saying, looking at agencies, think about the plan of action. So when do you see that kicking in, in terms of, when you start having a concern and that you have to then go and make different plans?
I'm the chief recovery officer, so I'm always concerned. But what I would say is that we're going through that evaluation now. I think we would want to have a clear picture by the end of Q1, or well, calendar year Q1, so by the end of next month. I think we would be looking to have conversations and share plans with the council about what, where we may need to move money and how we might be able to do so to make sure that we hit our deadlines.
That's helpful. Councilwoman Castello, do you have a follow-up to that?
Sure do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a list of projects that could be funded should other projects fall off the list?
So you'll recall that we took a number of proposals in, so we have the proposal list that we have, and then we also have projects that there's some interest in. There are some city agencies that we have not yet provided ARPA funding to, so there are some agency proposals that we might go back to. And so yes, there's, there's a, we're at no shortage of projects that we could fund.
Do we have that like in a list form that can be provided to the council?
So I think we provide, it's been some time, but we provided a list of all eligible projects, and so we can resurface that again.
Okay, and that would exclude everything that's already been funded? That would just be like the non-funded items, right?
Yes, we can do that.
And do we have that list ranked?
Do I have it ranked?
Is it ranked?
No, it is not.
Okay. Are we planning on ranking it at some point? I guess that's contingent upon whether other items fall off the existing list?
So, I'm not sure how to answer the question of rank. We already have a list of criteria that we use to vet all of our projects, so we would be using that same criteria. So the lens of equity, how quickly we can obligate, how quickly we can spend, equity, all of those same criteria would exist, and so we would...
Right, but if that list of projects has like 100 things and like 20 things meet all the criteria, but we can only fund five of them, are they ranked or is it discretionary?
They are not ranked at this time, and that I would allow, I mean, the administration as well as the mayor would weigh in on...
To be discretionary, okay. No, that's okay. Thank you. On page 18, BSIT, 21.3 million for broadband and digital equity. That's all, infrastructure?
It's primarily infrastructure and staffing. So it's administration staff, network, operations and engineering staff, air gap network, public Wi-Fi, which includes rec. centers and senior centers.
When do we expect payment dollars to start going out the door on that?
The inter-agency agreement that includes the entire budget for the allocation is being sent to the board in March, and they are already beginning to obligate against that, and then will spend very speedily thereafter.
Thank you so much. Slide 5, in quarter 1 of 2023, there were 291 million in obligations. In quarter 2, there were 207 million, it looks like. Forgive me if you explained it, what was the delta?
I did not, but thank you for the question, because I should have explained that, so thank you. So that is a result of our definition change in our office. So initially, what we were doing for counting as obligations, where we were counting the fiscal year budgets that we had for agencies. So for our grant agreements, every grant agreement has a budget that is designated by fiscal year. So we were aggregating the fiscal years and counting that as obligations. When we were starting to see underspend, we understood that that probably wasn't the best way to calculate obligations. That's when we switched to looking at what was in Workday. And so that's a fairer and more accurate way of understanding what's obligated, because that means we have contracts, we have invoices, things of that nature, and that's a better way to define obligation and to count that number.
Thank you very much. Page 4, 324 million obligated, 183.4 expended, for a total of 507.4 million, which would leave 33.6 million remaining, 133.6 million...
I trust your math on that.
What was that?
I trust your math on that.
Okay, yeah, 130 some odd million. What's the delta there? Is that revenue?
Between what's obligated and expended?
Well, the total of obligated and expended equals about 507 million. So there's about 134 million. Is that the revenue backfill, or?
There, so there's a, there's an overlap between obligated and expended, right? Because an obligation is the value of an entire contract. So if I award a contract of $1 million, the obligation is $1 million, and then perhaps I've advanced you $200 of that. So the two numbers cannot be stacked on top of each other. The one is nested inside the other.
So 324 is obligated, and that would leave 317 unobligated, correct?
Correct.
Got it, thank you. On, Ms. Chair, may I continue?
I have one question.
Please, no, I defer to my chairman.
Thank you. Just one question, and I'll say this, one's a comment and a question. So myself and I know other advocates for the unhoused were really excited yesterday in terms of the announcement as it relates to the purchase of the hotels, and you talked about that at the outset in terms of the shelters. One of the things that I find interesting, and just try to walk us through it, so I think the initial figure for the shelter or hotel acquisition was 29 million, and then the 15 billion that's been stated for the acquisition, and that 3 million for the management. So it appears that's 18 million, so there's another 11. What are you kind of, what are you envisioning for that 11 million? Am I reading that right, or is there something else that we should be thinking about there too?
Thank you for the question, and I'm going to give probably a summary, and then I might ask Deputy Director Tatum to answer as well, but, and I don't want to mistake for Director Simmons, who's done a yeoman's job since taking over the mayor's office of homeless services. So with the 11 million, some of those funds were used for our winter shelter operations. In addition to that, there are some plans for other permanent supportive housing efforts. And so I know that there, I don't want anyone to be under the illusion that we have solved our shelter challenge, and so there are still going to be, there's still going to be a need for additional housing units. And so I know that the director is looking at other opportunities to be able to acquire more permanent supportive housing units, as well as for some shelter operations as well, with the remaining funds. Is that a fair assessment? Okay.
I'll add, so it's the amount that was allocated initially for shelter acquisition. You can think about it in kind of three segments. So there's the shelter purchase, which in management agreement, which you're aware of, there's the $11 million for shelter operations, and then there's the remaining amount. And that's the piece that Shamai is speaking to about the other needs that MOHS has for shelter capacity and other needs within the homeless services space in general, and we know that Director Simmons is actively working and thinking about that.
No, I'm glad that you mentioned it from, in that perspective, that the homelessness problem is not solved, right, and so they can use additional resources. And then I know we talked about the winter shelters as well, so thank you for raising that up. Councilwoman Castello, did you have another one? And then also, I know Councilmember Reporter is online. If you have a member, a question, Councilmember Reporter, want to hear from her as well?
Well, Ms. Chair, I'll just wait to be interrupted by the councilwoman. If I'm not, I'm just going to...
Go right ahead.
Keep rolling. Page 21, DPW, 975K for recycling crews. Can someone advise to what that is?
So as mentioned in the presentation, we're funding 30 positions for DPW, 20 laborers and 10 drivers for six months.
Got it, thank you. Page 24, on the MOHS shelter acquisition that we discussed in the announcement yesterday, is that 29.1 the total acquisition cost of both hotels?
The total acquisition cost for the two hotels was 15.2 million, and then there's also 3.2 million for a management agreement to continue running those two hotels through the end of December. So there, that was what Councilwoman Bullock was asking about, is that, that piece remaining? And that's what Director Simmons and of course, the administration is thinking about and working on.
Oh, got it. I missed that, thank you very much. And page 34, I thought we were going to have 11 positions in the ARPA office. I guess we're, we stayed at nine?
So there's 10 positions that we can, that we can fill, but there are nine that are filled currently.
Nine filled, okay. I thought we were, weren't we originally authorized for 11, or am I making that up? I maybe...
If you're giving me another pen in this moment, I'll take it.
Duly noted, okay. And then, Moed, 248 positions. I see 193 positions for Youth Works. Am I correct to assume those are just youth workers that are, but they're not working at Moed, they're just part of the Youth Works program?
Correct, and there are about nine worksite supervisors that are in that count.
Got it.
So those are youth who are enrolled in Youth Works Academy, and then also Youth Works internships, which are the year-round programs that have started just recently.
Got it. And then the 41 for Higher Up, if you explain that, I apologize. What is that again?
And Higher Up is, so that's six-month subsidized employment positions at city agencies and also quasi-governmental agencies. So they have folks working six-month positions at DPW, DOT...
So those folks aren't necessarily working at Moed, they might be in...
Correct, correct. They're just being charged against Moed cost centers.
Okay, and then the last question I have is on, it's a two-part question. On page 2, it says that for a commitment, is defined as the total investment across all fiscal years, fully executed agreement with an agency, and/or a formal public announcement including the total investment. And then jumping to page 6, for MONZI, we have 45 million in commitments, about 9.9 million in expenditures for the, for the remaining 35.1 million. Do we have executed agreements with the agency?
We do have an executed agreement with the agency, yes.
Is it just one that covers that total?
That's correct, it's one agreement that covers the entire amount.
Can you please provide the committee a copy of that agreement?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. That is all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castello, and we did hear from Councilmember Reporter, who has diligently joined us online, that she doesn't have any questions either. I do want to thank you for the time today. I think one of the things you said at the outset that was very helpful was around the low to no spend, and why that is the case, and what we should be expecting in the next few months. I'll just ask, is there anything else that you see on the horizon that may be a challenge or obstacle, or anything you think we need to be aware of, just managing folks' expectations?
Yes, I mean, certainly, the obligation deadline is for sure going to be a challenge, but we've been working with the administration as well as with our agencies about understanding the need to, for us to move quickly, nimbly, but more importantly, accurately, and making sure that we have good contracts, not just fast contracts, to be able to get things out the door. It's a lot of money that has to be moved in a short period of time, and so certainly that is going to be a challenge. In addition to that, is, our process is not a fast one. It takes four to six weeks to get anything on a BOE agenda, and so that also counts against our time to be able to start to spend the money as well. So I'm not as concerned about the spend deadline as I am about the obligation deadline. So over the next couple of months, we'll certainly be thinking through strategies to be able to make sure that we adhere to that.
And I just want to check one more time. Any more questions, Councilmen? No? Okay, so in closing, I'll just say, look, we all recognize that 641 million is a game-changer and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and so when you use the term strategy, it's key, right, because we have to think about what this means not only now, but for the future. So thank you for being diligent, thank you for your team and being here and answering questions, and since there are no additional comments or questions, we'll stand and recess. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.